We have passed the hour of seven o'clock on June 30, 2013. I call this the annual town meeting to order. It is not a specific form requirement. At this time, I would like to take a motion to admit.
Mr. Moderator, move the following persons to be admitted to the meeting. Eric Gotti, Vice President of the Department of Public Affairs. Garrett Barnes. Robert Toro, Assistant Director. Article four. Carol Dupro, Town Clerk, Staff, RAC, I can record. Operations Director. Phil Haley, North Taylor, Freedom of the Fourth. Jason Smith, North Camp, Freedom of the Fourth. Robert Carbonne, North Camp, Freedom of the Fourth. Gary McAtier, Custodian, Freedom of the Fourth. Kathleen Willis, Superintendent of Schools. Eugene Torre, Town Hall, IT Department. Carl Nelson, Business Manager. Amy Luckowitz, Youth Services Director. Michael Murphy, Police Chief. Marion McKay, Treasurer Collector. Allison Olson, Human Resources. Paul Breckman, Wright Pierce, DPW. Richard Caravalli, DPW Director. Helena Minton, Librarian. Danielle McKnight, Planner. Michael Penelly, Incoming School Finance Director. Martin Fear, Health Agent. Ashley Traubman, Patch. Susan Magner, Veterans. Debbie Carbonne, Assessant.
We have motion to admit. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? If we could have quiet in the hall as they're coming in, just some housekeeping orders. So, everyone needs to be, all voters need to be wearing a ribbon. And it's a turquoise ribbon for voters. All visitors are wearing a black ribbon. Town officials and committee members can sit in the first two rows in the front. Other visitors can sit in the first several rows to my right. The tellers to be doing the counting tonight. In the event we have a hand count. Ed McGrath will count the front and to my right. And Mr. Brad Jones Senior will count the center section and to my left. I would also ask, I would also ask that everybody please make sure their cellphones are off. I'll also call your attention to the fact that if you did not bring your warrant, warrants are available. There's also a handout. And if you didn't pick one up on your way in, it contains a funding source and a summary of all the money articles. So, there are books in the room. So, if you forgot your warrants or you'd like this handout, put your hand up. The annual report is available as you leave the meeting. And lastly, to make an announcement, the North Reading Community Impact Team has a presentation here on Thursday night. That's why we'll finish tonight, right? They have, the Community Impact Team is having a presentation on Thursday night, June 6th at seven o'clock. It is Sean Eggington. And she's an article of the Parents' Guide to Texting, Facebook, and Social Media: Understanding the Benefits in Dangers of Parenting in the Digital World. This is open to anyone in the community. That's this Thursday night, seven o'clock here in the auditorium. We'd like to learn more about social media and some things to watch out for. Okay. At this time, I'd like to call on our Selectman Chairman, Sean Delaney, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I understand Mr. Webster would like to address the body on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wish there was a bigger crowd here tonight for many reasons, but also to thank a man who has given approximately 14 years to the school department and who will be leading us as of June 30th. And so, tonight, I'd like to publicly thank for myself and for the school committee and for the town, I'd like to thank Mr. Carl Nelson for the great work he's done for the school department over the last 14 years. And we're definitely going to miss him. And then, just quickly, one other thing. You'll notice there's a new face sitting next to Carl at the school committee table tonight. And we actually haven't tethered to Carl for the next two months, month and a half. And that's sitting next to Carl is Mr. Michael Connelly, who will be taking over the position of Director of Finance and Operations when Carl leaves us on June 30th.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrants and refer to the article by number and further to dispense with the reading of the service by the constable.
We have the motion, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article one, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article one of the FY 2013 budget, I move to pass over Article one as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend there are no amendments to the FY 2013 budget.
The Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
The Finance Committee also recommends no action.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article two, Mr. Messeria.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer for free cash, the sum of $124,131, to fund a deficit in the FY 2003 snow and ice budget, as specified in Article two as printed in the warrant.
How about 2013 on 2003?
It is the deficit in FY 2013, as stated, as written in the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
The Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article three, Mr. Messeria.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from the FY 2013 operating budget voted under Article seven of the June 4, 2012 town meeting, the sum of $200,000 from pensions and debt in line 29, and transfer for free cash, the sum of $45,592.42, for a total of $225,592.42. To be added to the capital improvement stabilization fund established under Article five of the October 2007 town meeting, as specified in Article three, as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Messeria.
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Mrs. Shilber.
The Finance Committee recommends.
This is a stabilization account that requires a two-thirds vote of the body. Further discussion? Mr. Messeria.
Just to provide a little background, the fund balance today is $565,686. The balance on July 1st will be $2,600, yeah, $261,460 if this article is approved. And that's because with this article, we're adding to the $565,000, $168, what we're asking for in this warrant. In a later article, we're going to transfer money from this account to fund debt service in the FY 2014 budget.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article four, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Fode, I move to transfer from the fiscal year 2013 water recovery unit, the sum of $268,187, to be added to the water infrastructure stabilization fund, as specified in Article four as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Fode.
Board of Selectmen recommend passing.
Finance Committee, Mrs. Shilber. Further discussion? The stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article five.
Mr. Fode. Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article five as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Fode.
Recommend passing.
The Finance Committee, Mrs. Shilber.
The Finance Committee recommends passing over this now, but please be aware of the fact that the stabilization fund needs to continually be funded and grown. While we cannot afford to do it right now, we need to continue and then think about it in our next town meeting.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article six, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer from the overlay surplus, the sum of $32,692, to fund a deficit in the fiscal year 2009 overlay account, as specified in Article six as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mrs. Shilber.
Finance Committee recommends.
To the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a result of a case, a public utility tax appeal case by specifically Verizon, not just in town, but across the Commonwealth, which has finally been adjudicated in favor of Verizon, thereby leaving a deficit in our overlay reserve account. So, therefore, that's why it's 2009, a case pending for four years. So, it's necessary for us to transfer the funds in to the overlay reserve account.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article seven, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer from the fiscal year 2013 operating budget voted under Article seven at the June 4, 2012 town meeting, the sum of $41,111, with police salaries line 30, to fund a deficit in the police detail account, as specified in Article seven as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee, Mrs. Shilber.
Finance Committee recommends.
To the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Motion, Mr. Moderator, thank you. There's a deficit in this particular account. And this is a result of details which were contracted with the town, which was found by private contractors who did not pay the bill. The town is responsible for covering the deficit. We have taken legal action against the appropriate parties and hope to recover most of the funds at a later date. We have to do this, otherwise the Land Management backs out for cash.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article eight, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to choose all necessary town offices not elected by ballot and to determine what instructions shall be given.
The Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
We certainly recommend.
Finance Committee, Mrs. Shilber. No action required from the Finance Committee. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the printed town warrant for the year 2012, as reported to the town offices and committees as of here, other reports as they be presented at this meeting.
We have the motion. I know we have at least two reports. Tuck Karuuchi on behalf of the Secondary School Building Committee. Mr. Karuuchi, you have your floor.
First of all, I'd like to thank the people of North Reading for supporting the SSBC for the vote back in March to continue to work in the middle school and high school. I've got a few things I'm going to explain to you tonight that's going on in the school. The number one, one of the number one things is we signed the GMP with Gilbey Company. The GMP is Guaranteed Maximum Price for Buildings, which is $1 million, one. So, that leaves us about $20 million left, but we don't get it back. The $20 million is kind of what we call slot cost, which they scare of the architect, Gilbey, and the owners project manager. Give you an idea of what's going to happen the next four months up at the high school. And you start it, if you come in, you see the new building up there. And what's going to happen in the next four months is you will see yellow walls coming up on the high school. And those yellow walls are going to support the brickwork that's going to start in July of that part of the building. Also, the roof will be going on high school and bottom floor facility. The steel work will be done sometime the end of August, beginning of September. Also, work will be done on the student side of the parking lot when school closes, which means that'll be shut down for summertime. There'll be going to separate system and treatment plant up there. Now, if you look around for people who've been up there, we have about 200 employees up there on that project right now. So, the project is progressive. We're on budget, we're on time. And last of all, the best thing that happens is we're not disrupting the education, and we will not for the next three years. And that's it. If anybody, the other thing will make it a little difficult, if anybody wants to see the site, you can call me. We set up a time, we can go look at the site. It'll have to be during off hours, but I'm willing to take you around here to help a bit, be a make. Thank you.
Ed McGrath on behalf of the recycling.
I'd like to follow. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Moderator. My name's Ed McGrath, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the recycling committee. I want to touch upon five subjects, and it'll be done in less than five minutes. Number one, old television sets are not long enough. To correctly dispose of old television sets, one must simply call JRM and schedule a pickup. The 800 number is available on the town website, and we have it out at the League of Movement Voters Table of Lottie. Do us all a favor, ask a word to your neighbors. Number two, through 10 months of the fiscal year, we have avoided $68,502 in tipping fees. And over the past seven fiscal years, North Reading is averaging, averaging the savings of $90,000 per year. The town's recycling rate is about 19.5 percent, and that number is down for previous years, and we attribute that to a 12 percent drop in the amount of shade that is recycled. Trash is down about four and a half percent. The recycling committee feels there's more savings out there, and we're pointing to paper. Paper makes up about 30 percent of the waste stream, and we're recycling it at a rate of 12 percent. So, there's 18 percentage points worth of improvement there. If you're not sure of all the paper products that can be recycled, there's a display at the League of Movement Voters Table, and we hope to have some outreach this summer at the IRB on barbecues. Number three, beginning July 1st, residents will be limited to three 35-gallon trash barrels or three trash bags each week. Last year, the DPW conducted a survey, the results were 90 percent of the households that we serve put out one to two barrels a week. 8 percent of the households put out three barrels per week. And 2.5 percent put out four or more barrels per week. To the households in the latter category, you can get down to three barrels by diverting paper, plastics, glass, and metal containers from the trash to the recycling bin. And for those of you who have an extra trash barrel and need another recycling bin, we have stickers available here tonight, and they're available at the DPW desk in Town Hall during business hours. Just slap one on, add extra trash barrel, and in the lock, you've got a recycling bin. A brochure explaining the changes to the solid waste program with a description of what can be recycled is being mailed this month with the quarterly tax bills. Number four, the recycling committee is looking for some new members. We've had a couple people with youth sports, has taken up a role with too much time, and a lot of time they've voted. If you're interested, you can see Meg Robinson or myself here tonight, or contact us in the future, and we'll get the process started. And finally, I asked this for my birthday, like the North Reading Recycling on Facebook. I was hoping to get to 100 members, we didn't quite make it. Thank you for your attention, and thank you tomorrow.
Mrs. Shilber, for the ideas you'd like.
Hi, good evening. I'm Abby Hubble, China, the Finance Committee. This evening, you'll be voting on lending for fiscal 2014. This budget represents the hard work and effort of the municipal and school offices. Once again, the limited funds have meant that there's been a challenge to make the needs of the town and provide the level of services expected by North Reading. Those involved in the process are to be commended for their diligence. I would like to mention a few items which occurred during the past year and comment on our upcoming budget. The town's stabilization fund remains funded at 4 percent of net revenue. This falls short of the desired 5 percent. We must continue to make every effort to add funds as available to grow and maintain this fund. Not only is this fund important should a true emergency occur, but it is necessary to maintain our bond rating. We saw the impact of conservative budget evictions and a reasonable stabilization fund in the lower YO and Potts with the new high school and middle school complex. This past year has seen unexpected needs for veteran services. The Finance Committee's reserve fund transferred $95,000 to veteran services to meet their unanticipated budget needs. While the town has reimbursed 75 percent of the monies for veteran service, the reimbursement effectively does not occur for two fiscal years, creating a cash flow problem for the town. The Finance Committee has urged a significant increase in the veterans' fair budget for this reason. A recent article in the newspaper suggested that following a military conflict, the government can expect 50 years of veterans' benefits to be required. We must support our veterans, and we must plan for this work. In all likelihood, we will continue to see increased needs for this budget. Last fall, the Board of Selectmen formed a new capital improvement committee. This committee was charged with creating a planning process for both short as well as long-term capital needs. In addition, the capital committee has worked towards developing a delegated source of funding for capital items. This is extremely important. In the past, we've used accommodation of bonding as free cash to fund finance capital needs. Free cash is always an unknown and makes capital planning very difficult. You will be asked this evening in Article three to appropriate funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund. This fund is used for capital needs and debt service. Those of us who served on the capital improvement committee are delighted that the town is making an effort to maintain and grow a fund for capital needs. North Reading has worked very hard to meet the needs of the youth of our town. The new school complex, the school programs, and the recreation department are just such a few items. While there's never enough funding, every effort has been made to try and maintain the education and recreation programs. When the recreation department requested additional funding beyond their initial budget request, the Board of Selectmen increased their budget. These are all worthy expenditures that deserve to be supported. However, as we move forward, we feel a slightly more balanced approach should be attempted. For example, there's no funding available for Article 21, which included new flooring for the senior center. We must continue to try and meet the needs of our growing senior population. Again, I would like to thank all the department heads and the school department, the town administrator, and the town finance director for their hard work in developing this year's budget. And I would also like to give a special thank you to Carl Nelson, Director of Finance and Operations for the school department. He is dedicated and no reviews to our town, and will be retiring next month. It has been a pleasure working with Carl, and we will miss him. I was also going to thank you guys for coming out tonight, and I guess those of you who may be extra have deserved a huge thank you. I would hope that those watching at home would make an effort to attend in person, rather than just listening on their own television. There are a lot of people in this town that were very hard to bear budgets and articles for this town meeting, and your support and your active participation in town meeting and your vote are important. Thank you.
Any other reports?
Any other reports?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just would like to take this opportunity to welcome two new faces to our management team. CPC Planner Administrator Danielle Knight. And New Services Director Amy Mokowicz.
Anyone else seeking recognition out of the article? Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Ollary.
Absolutely recommend that we accept those reports.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous, Mr. Ollary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to admit the following person to the meeting. Varaksha, representing Senator Bruce Gansoff.
My motion to admit, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous. Article 10, Mr. Frisco.
Give me any, everybody. Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the common public works to set easements on behalf of the town as specified in Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
With the motion, does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Frisco.
Board of selectmen recommend it.
Finance committee, no action? No action required from the finance committee. Further discussion, Mr. Frisco.
This is just an annual activity that we go on. There hasn't been any easements accepted in the last four years, but it's just a practice that we do every year.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous, Article 11, Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the treasurer to enter into compensation balance agreements as specified in Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
With the motion, does the board of selectmen wish to recommend? Mr. Frisco.
Board of selectmen recommend it.
For the finance committee, Mr. Silver.
The finance committee recommends.
Discussion to the motion, Mr. Frisco.
Again, this is another one of the routine articles. It allows our finance director to help avoid vague in weeks of employee notice.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous, Article 12, Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of, I'm sorry, the sum as may be allotted from Chapter 90, apportionment for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, and maintaining roadways in the town of North Reading as specified in Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
Mr. Frisco. Board of selectmen recommend it.
Finance committee.
The finance committee approves.
Further discussion, Mr. Frisco.
This is actually a great article from the town. You can see in the warrant article, it's talked about a little over $730,000. We actually received over $745,000, more to our surprise than anything. You will see an adjustment on Article 16. If you look at Article 16, item number 2 under Town Road Program, in the article it talks about $300,000 we requested to fund. We're actually going to reduce that amount down to $63,000 if you approve this article. So the state was very big to us, very kind to us this year.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous. Article 13, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer of free cash to some of $229.58 to be billed prior year as specified in Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
Board of selectmen. Board of selectmen, unanimously recommend it.
Finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, these are bills related to services provided to disabled public safety personnel that the bills arrive in town hall at the social business event by 2014.
This is a prior year bill that requires a four-fifths vote of the lot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous, Article 14, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, this is actually broken into two motions. The first motion is a jarred vote. The second motion deals with item 17, two-thirds vote. F5, 2014 operating budget, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in column headed selection recommended in line items 1 through 103 and excluding lines 28 through 49, which are solid waste management and line 90 debt service, including the transfer of all of the funds set forth in the budget detail dated June 3, 2013. Total of $52,399,184. In further, the lines for department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation to each department except for lines 72 through 89. Education and 91 through 103, water, hill view, and park and rec recreation enterprise funds.
We have the motion. I understand we have a presentation by the town administrator, Greg Valioponis. Is it a 15-minute leave for the meeting? So the town administrator would like a 15-minute leave of the meeting in order to present the budget. All those in favor, leave of the meeting for the purposes of a presentation, please say aye.
Aye.
Owe. Unanimous, Mr. Valioponis. Leave of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. As was indicated earlier, the budget that's being presented this evening is a conservative budget. What you see behind you are some of the budget goals that we developed as we begin the budget process, conservative revenue assumptions. Our goal was to maintain our critical reserves as Mrs. Horber pointed out. We attempt to negotiate long-term savings through our labor contract negotiations. One of the items that we looked at is maintaining affordable health insurance plans and maintaining savings through health insurance plans. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we go forward in this presentation. Development of alternative revenue sources. Those alternative revenue sources involve the sale of things such as advertising space. We thin out and we clear timber in the town forest and we make money from that. So the town is constantly looking at alternative revenue sources. One of the things we're looking at is a solar generation facility where we can sell power back to utility companies. So it's critical that we do that. As Mrs. Horber again pointed out, the dedicated funding source of capital is important going forward. And one of the other budget goals that we maintain is effective collaboration between our school and our town leaders because without that, none of this works. So fiscal 2014, one of the budget highlights. The budget highlights is we have seven labor contracts settled on the municipal side. We have established the fact that we're using some of our reserves, including free cash and debt stabilization, to fund the budget. We're upfront about the fact that we need to do that. That additionally, we view earmark money and near-sheer budget to rebuild our reserves. And you did that earlier when you voted money into the debt capitalization, capital stabilization fund. The budget that's presented establishes the critical public safety initiatives, which is the addition of a new police officer who will fill the role of the school resource officer, and also provides that we'll be adding three new firefighter paramedics in the fire department. It's critical that those two items are brought forward and you understand those be integral to our budget presentation this evening. And then the last budget highlight that we have is the total growth in the budget is 1.5%. So it's pretty strong when you consider the fact that we have contracts settled and we funded all of our programs and we funded our health insurance program, all within that 1.5% number. And it didn't happen by accident, I'm proud of the fact that we're there. Going forward, what are our budget risks? And I've identified what some of those are. Employee benefits. We have certain benefits that are phasing out to our employees in fiscal 2014 and for this year and next year, we'll see some budget pressures as a result of their people that are moving, so to speak, through the pipeline, they'll be receiving benefits to the last time there is a cost associated with those. Other risks are changes in management. Continuity of management is critical and to the extent we can maintain our managers, easier the job becomes in putting together a financial plan for a town meeting. With public safety, one of the things that we need to do is understand that we have a revenue stream that's sufficient to sustain our additional personnel, new programs, and address critical community needs. And I think I talked a little bit before about additional personnel about poison fire are included in this budget. Energy, the cost of energy is unknown, as it is with you, it's unknown with us. But one of the things we do face is unforeseen natural disasters. So as those disasters occur, we hope that we have enough money to be able to fund it and we do apply and receive federal and state grants to reimburse us. Health insurance is a risk. However, it's a risk only because of merely an act of federal loss and we need to stay on top of that to keep our health insurance costs low. And then, as was mentioned earlier, there are other economically driven items such as veterans' benefits, which have grown at an exponential rate. We can't control that cost, but those costs are economically driven. We have an obligation to fund those and the significant increase in the budget as a result of that. This is just a pie chart that demonstrates to you how the revenues are divided between the schools, general government, and fixed costs. I won't spend a lot of time on it. And then the next slide just shows that monies are divided. The monies are divided, 66% school, 34% town. And you'll see how the levels are divided and how they're allocated in the budget. This is a number that summarizes our revenue plan. It's similar to what's in the front of your budget book. If you have a copy of it, you can see it, you can memorize it, and you can think about it. But if you have any questions, these are the numbers that go down with much detail that comprise in terms of the budget that we're recommending this evening. I'd like to just talk a little bit about what our cash reserves are. And you can see that we have free cash as of today of $384,696. 1.9 million in the stabilization fund, $565,000 in the capital stabilization fund, and so forth. These amounts have grown over a period of time. And if you look back at the 10-year history of the town, you'll see that the amounts in each of these categories have grown. One of the non-traditional revenue sources that I do want to point out is we do have almost $300,000 that we bring in a year in self-power revenue. So when you think about self-service, your town as a participant in that process will lease space out to the cellular providers. And we bring in about $300,000 a year that we apply toward our budget every year. This is just a summary of the key revenue adjustments that we have when we look at the budget. And these show the incremental increases that we apply toward the budget every year. So these numbers help us attain a balanced budget. I won't go through what they are, but some of the highlights is the local mirrors options tax because of the fact that people go out to eat is up about $50,000. We have $90,600 coming in and being applied toward the budget and additional money to offset costs in the fire and ALS department. And again, on the bottom, we utilize about $214,000 in free cash toward budgetary items. This is a summary of what the key budget drivers are and I will go through them. These are the increases in the budget from current fiscal year to the fiscal year beginning on July 1st. And I do want to just read through them because they really are a snapshot of what the cost of the driving municipal budget is. Veterans assistance is up $211,350. Our longevity benefit, which is the one-time 15% longevity bonus, is being phased out as $181,000. We're dedicating funds toward our technology and information services of $57,500. We're providing staffing for the ALS program, which is three new firefighter paramedics and all associated costs and the cost of that is about $137,000. We're funding a portion of our capital improvements from the budget this year. The capital improvement is much larger than $56,000, but these are monies that are considered to be reoccurring revenues and it's $56,000. On the town side, there's a 2% increase due to employees for cost of living and that totals about $177,000. And then the last value of the budget is $136,000 increase in the retirement assessment. So in a real quick summary, those are the things that drive the budget. The, I won't spend a lot of time talking about health insurance, but this just summarizes what we do, how we look at the health insurance budget of the year. We have a 3% increase, but what we do is we don't just pay this year's number and pile 3% on top of that. What we do is we look at our enrollment this year, we look at what our costs are going to be this year. And then we estimate based upon this year's cost what our next year's cost is going to be. And in this year, we actually see a resulting drop in the health insurance budget of about $6,700. So in summary, the budget is fully funded, balanced throughout the annual funds. It's a 1.5% increase and it's responsive and meets the needs of the community. Thank you.
Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney.
Of course, I know she does have a recommendation, but I just wanted to just correct everyone's attention to page 23. Page 23 of the warrant, just in order that it's got my attention. On the planning commission, the list in terms of the staff of the planning commission, talks about the high time GIS coordinator, planner. That was an amount of $26,000. The board is taking the $26,000 away from CPC. What it has done is put $13,000 of the DPW, added $13,000 to the administration budget for the DPW for the purposes of hiring an outside consultant to do GIS services. I just wanted to correct that at one point so it doesn't look like they have a GIS coordinator in CPC. But what is likely to unanimously recommend this?
For the finance committee. Mr. Silver.
The finance committee recommends.
For the school committee, Mr. Webster.
School committee and the committee recommends this budget, which includes Mr. Carl Nelson's final school budget.
May I?
I'm really proud and I live on South Brick Road in North Reading and I'd like to give a first recommendation, a salutation and appreciation of our fire and police department. However, when he's talking about $52 million budget and the eyes and the nays, I just wondered, when did the policy of having an employee freeze go off, first of all? And second of all, with the increases that we have, how can we justify having three more firemen? I realize it will put it at five per shift. And a school police officer, I just can't, I can't see the need to put this burden on the taxpayer who have already given enough $15 million for the override to cover the school expenses. And even though public safety is a real big priority, I don't find any problem with what we have with all firemen. They're not on the pensions, they're not on the healthcare, they're not on the retirement. And I just think that we should really look at what we're spending. The tax rate has gone up and it will go up every year and you are putting a lot of people, especially the elderly, at risk. Thank you very much.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, very good question, but I'll take them one at a time. In terms of... In terms of the police department, the police chief and his superior staff came in and presented a budget where they're able to add staff within a current budget. So there was no additional cost to the police side for adding that additional police officer. In terms of the added staff in the fire department, you may recall about 15 months ago, we started ALS service. So the cost of those new employees in the fire department is being paid out of the additional service being provided to the community by our own firefighters and the ALS service that was provided by an outside ambulance service prior to our implementation of ALS by our own firefighters about 15 months ago. And it doesn't mean that they don't have, I know fire chief will not be happy with this. Board is likely has not agreed to have five men per shift.
But my thing is you're spending $130,000 or $150,000 to have these people educated to do the ALS. And I have no problem with that. But I just figure, does this mean we'll have another lieutenant on the fire department? Because we're increasing the number of men?
And the cost to educate them to get, to be paramedic certified is being paid out of the ALS revenue.
But we have another three come on now. I just think that it seems the purpose to put another three on when you're in a fiscal climate that we're in right now.
The revenue they generate through ALS file exceeds what the cost is to educate as well as to pay these additional players.
But the increase in salary, I realize that the ambulance service provides and I realize that we do get some reimbursement, but I still don't think it's going to justify having three more firemen. And will there be another lieutenant?
To my office, Chief Boyer?
Chief Boyer, I'd like to address the issue.
Ma'am, we're increasing three more firefighter paramedics to make it so there are two paramedics working 24 hours a day. There will be no promotions with this. These will be first-line firefighters. The money, as Selig and Delaney said, the money to pay for this is coming from the advanced life support that we started on April 9th, 2012. We're averaging about, per year, $600,000 that we're taking in for the ambulance. For three new men, we're asking for $137,000, starting in, I believe it said nine months. I asked for five men 24/7, as he alluded, because I feel the safety factor, we need to have five guys working 24 hours a day. So the money that we're asking for will really be transferred from the ALS account to pay for these men. There will be no, no promotions.
Mr. Simons?
Jeff Simons, 31th and Delaney. Just a couple of observations about the school budget. But before I do, I need my San Francisco Giants hat on for this. I just want to mention the passing of one of North Reading's legendary teachers who passed away a couple of weeks ago, Toledo Gibson, who gave 30 years of service, one of the most fabulous teachers that North Reading has ever seen. Mr. Toledo, would you like it? I just want to make a notation. I traveled around town the past couple of years. I've heard a lot about high taxes in North Reading. But I want to commend the school department for providing, continuing to provide what I think is one of the best bargains in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I looked at their school budget and I ran to the Department of Education website to see how we're doing relative to other towns. And we continue to provide outstanding education here in North Reading. And we, our expenses continue to be toward the bottom of the average expense per student in state. We're about selling around 200 mark out of 300 and something districts. So we provide this stabilization and we're about the bottom third in expenses. The other observation that you can lean from page 24 is you look at the salary line of about $21 million on a total budget of about $25.5 million. Salaries for the teachers represent about 85% of the budget. Very, very large proportion. And of the remaining piece in operations, running the schools, is probably about a quarter of that. So there's a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the, rubber hits the road with the school department. Thank you once again, Carl Nelson, for keeping that operation budget right where it's been for the past several years. Appreciate that. So my, my just conclusion is that, you know, there's a lot, perhaps a lot of reasons why the tax rate is so high in North Reading, but I think it's, it's pretty hard to take a look at the school budget and not think that we're getting an awfully good bang for our buck here. There's not, there's not a lot of fluff in the extra budget, that, that part of the budget. In terms of just basic expenses, it's been pretty much black for probably five years, not going up again this year. You're, the, as I mentioned, the average price per student is below average. The average administration cost in North Reading is below the state average. And the average salaries going towards classroom teachers and specialists is right on, right on average for the whole state. So thanks once again to the North Reading School Department.
Further discussion? Seeing none of all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? There is a second motion on Article 14, which is going to require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Delaney?
Mr. Moderator, motion two on Article 14, FY 2014 operating budget. A move to raise appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the column headed Select and recommended in the lines 48 to 49 solid waste management in the amount of $974,000. The question, $371,000. In line 90, debt service in the amount of $6,938,650, including the transfer of all other funds set forth in the budget detailed date June 3, 2012.
We have the motion. Does the board select to wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney?
The board is likely to unanimously recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Sova.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Valid comments?
The reason why this is done as a separate motion is the source of funds is stabilization funds for both debt and for our solid waste budget. And these items make, these items subject to a two-thirds vote. So if they weren't broken out, the entire budget would be subject to a two-thirds vote. So what we do is we break it out. We vote the majority, which is what you've already done. These items require a two-thirds vote.
Further discussion? Seeing none of all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 15. Mr. Delaney?
Mr. Moderator, Article 15, transfers on free gas to supplement the FY 2014 operating budget. A move to transfer for free gas to following amounts to supplement the FY 2014 operating budget as follows. Salary pool supplement, the sum of $188,846. And police expenses, the sum of $33,897, for a total of $214,743, as specified in Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Does the board select to wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney?
Board is likely to unanimously recommend.
Finance committee, Sova.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Delaney?
Mr. Moderator, the police expenses is a final year payback of a cop fast grant that the town received some years ago prior to current police chief being in place. A grant that should have ended years earlier. So that'd be the last year we have to pay that back. It's a lot of pain. The salary pool supplement is a 15% longevity for our employees that has now been negotiated out of the contracts. So this is the last year in which the town will have to expend this particular item.
Further discussion? Seeing none of all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 16, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to appropriate amounts of purchased items of a capital nature as specified in Article 16 as printed in the warrant with the following changes. Raise inappropriate $35,000 of the pure footprint replacement. Raise inappropriate $21,000 to the interview interrogation system. Borrow $63,000 pursuant to the national law for the town road improvement program. Transfer $236,960 from the wastewater GT Mary gift account and borrow $29,500 for the DEIR wastewater project acknowledges where borrowing is listed as the source of the funds. Said warrant will be pursuant to national law chapter 44, section 7, subsection 9.
We have the motion. Does the board select to wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Foley?
Mr. Chair, can I have a second? First, the board is likely unanimously going to approve. Just a quick, I wanted to state that this is the first year that the board has selected, put together a CIP planning committee, eight members, all departments were required to, or requested to submit requests. And the committee interviewed each of the department heads on the request, did site visits and then ranked the, the projects according to the government. Now, the only change is, as Mr. Prusman pointed out, it was a town road program. Instead of $300,000 laws, we reduced $63,000 laws based on additional chapter 90 funds from the state of Massachusetts.
Does the finance committee wish to make my recommendations?
The finance committee, what's this article? This is, as Mr. Foley pointed out, a, an effort of a lot of folks and putting together a capital improvement plan this year. And we're off to a very good start.
For the school department, Mr. Webster?
The school department, university recommends, we have two items in this group of items. One is for a truck to replace our truck, which we had since 2003. And the other is for best disatment. I'd also like to thank the capital improvement projects committee that was formed. They did a great job and it was, they gave us a thorough report and again, it was a highly professional job.
Mrs. Capazuda?
Yes, I am the lady Capazuda, 12th and Drive. Mr. Foley, you answered one of my questions about the town road program. Are there any other line ideas here that are available for chapter 9 to come through the state? Any reinforcement from the state, any?
No, chapter 90, I'm sorry.
Mr. Foley? So the question?
Chapter 90 is only used for roadway work, cannot be used for anything else on the road.
Mrs. Capazuda?
So nothing else, nothing else in the lineup is available for any state reinforcement?
No, not to my knowledge. Again, we, we, well, DEIR wastewater, we attempted to offer a grant for that, but it was not, we didn't get it.
Sir? Dave Guset, Six Camper Way, I have a question. I'm looking at DEIR wastewater. Nowhere in the warrant can I find what DEIR stands for, nor what, what that does to the town.
Mr. Breckman?
Thank you. There was a short presentation I was going to give earlier, but it seemed unnecessary at the time. DEIR stands for draft environmental impact report. What that does is a procedural permitting process where we go through some analysis to determine what the best alternative to, to proceed with wastewater resentment. My presentation, if you were here at a special town meeting last October, I gave a presentation talking about some of the alternatives we're looking at. This is a formal process we need of Massachusetts Department of Policy Act that requires us to do a lot of research and looking at a lot of things in the town. But we see one on the water side as well, so there's a water or wastewater side. Basically, what we're looking at is balancing these out where we would bring in water likely from the NWRA and that would allow us to send wastewater out and not have to put our own treatment plant in North Reading. So it could allow us to, a much simpler, easier pathway and, and less costly likely. But this is a process that we must go through. There's no way to get out of it, unfortunately.
Yeah, I'm looking at half a million dollars. It's a lot. Now, is that done by an outside contractor?
Yes, it would be done by an consultant.
Is that put up for bid, by the way?
Sorry?
Is that contract put up for bid?
Mr. Carvalho, DPW director, if you'd like to address the vote?
Prior work, we have a kind of ongoing water master plan, about $100,000 that we have to put out to, for quotes, not bids. We should do quotes. So this one, currently using the consultants we're using, probably look at what alternatives are possible effective for the town.
Mr. Foley?
Just, just for full disclosure, Mr. Breckman, who was up previously, Mr. Carvalho, he is the consultant working on that. So he's the engineer from, from PF3PAS that's working on that.
Ma'am? Could you turn the microphone off, please?
Carol Walker, 7th Street. Can you quickly explain to me what this MWRA interconnected design is?
Mr. Foley?
The MWRA connected design is having our consultant, Rick Sess, can design how, the possibility of getting water from MWRA. There's several options. One is looking at copping into the ring or bringing out, or putting this connection in through the ring into North Reading.
Massachusetts Water Resources.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right.
So we're looking at different avenues of getting water to the, to the town. And the mass water resiliability is one of those, one of those options.
Ma'am, a follow-up?
So we will be appropriating the $200,000?
It would be, we're looking to bond the $200,000. Bonding?
Or overtime.
Mr. Vino?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joey, 11th and Rock Street. Am I reading this right now? Would be an ask to spend $400,000 on something we may not even do?
Are you, are you referring between the two, between the interconnection and the DEIR?
Yeah, DEIR and MWRA connection design. See, I'm playing with my theories. We're going to spend this $400,000, $500,000, and then you're going to turn around and say we have to go with MWRA, or else we wasted half a million dollars. I would ask you people who are known of this.
Mr. Krujci?
I'm also another committee in this town. It's a small amount to see if they have, but that's the Hillview Commission. That money comes out of the Hillview, is bonded with the Hillview, if that's not possible, town will be bonded. That's to keep the integrity of the Gulf Coast. We also return $128,000 to the town in moving taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Vasir?
As a select member of the Florida Wastewater Committee, basically... As a selectman member, we, for our wastewater committee, basically, the importance of these D E I Rs are to go through the process of permitting. The town needs another source of water. We experienced that a few years ago. We also need wastewater. We need that for commercial area, we also need it for Martin's Pond. We have to move these things forward. This is a long-term project. Water is probably fortified years up. Wastewater could be up to ten years, but without going through this process, we will get nowhere. The board of selectmen has a strategic plan that we've evolved over the past few years. In that plan, we need to increase our commercial base. We cannot do that without having some form of a sewer district in town. We must move these things forward.
Mr. Delay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If any of you were here for a presentation that was given by a consultant back about a year ago, part of that presentation talks about property values, particularly commercial property, valued commercial property, particularly in Conkers Street, what it would do if we had wastewater treatment in town. And I don't know if we have the detail within this paper, but I welcome a consultant to come up and explain to you folks again what those values do if we did have wastewater treatment within town.
Mr. Breckman, if you'd like to address the vote again.
I, I review the report that was done by a sub-consultant that put together, looking at all the values of property with sewer, without sewer, and the revenues that would be provided, just based on existing structures and existing properties out there of having sewer there. There's a number of businesses along Route twenty-eight that have very difficult type of wastewater. I know a couple of them actually have problems, and, and the D P is aware of them, and it's costing them a lot of money to maintain these. So, just by providing sewer loan to see, increasing revenue of, I believe the report ran about two-hundred thousand, two-half million dollars a year in just tax revenue, just without any changes to it. If there were changes in the properties themselves where they were built up to, to, to increase their, their value associated with the sewer having availability to get rid of that wastewater that would be generated with larger buildings, there were numbers over a million dollars that could be generated through the tax, increased taxes, just as associated with the new sewer. And that, that, that would be a benefit to the town for sure.
Ma'am.
I'm sorry, Julie Brown, Buffalo. Um, I believe you do the sewer for, proposed was not the entire community, it was just a certain section, and the cost was astronomical, like twenty million dollars for just a certain section, which could be reimbursed by a certain percentage to the other owners that wouldn't go on to the sewer. Is it really feasible for not writing at this point to put sewer in townwide?
And that, that's actually.
Mr. Breckman, if you'd like to address the answer. Please go through the, I would ask everyone here, please go through the chair. Don't speak until recognized. Thank you. Mr. Breckman.
That's actually what the purpose of the, the D E I R is, is to go through that analysis, make sure that it's the best choice possible. The town had spent some time before looking at this, it came up with an alternative that was, as you, as you mentioned, you know, several tens of millions of dollars, not necessarily something that would, would fit within the town. So, through this opportunity that you have now where the potential to bring M W R A water in had a cost of, of less than what you're paying for now for water, but the long term, it's a much lower cost because you're part of a larger water system. You're not associated with a small system like Andover who is charging you very high rates for the water in now. You can be part of a larger one and not be so subject to fluctuations in cost or, or changes in capital improvements. So, having that benefit and bringing in M W R A water would allow you now to take some water out of the basin potentially, out of the English River, which had defined the system before, where you're looking at a totally completely in-town process, in-town treatment plant, which would put a lot of liability on you, and you could become member of a larger treatment process where the, the cost would be maybe half or a third what, what to treat on a daily basis. So, your system cost goes down, and you're not having to buy a wastewater treatment plant and operate. So, that's what this analysis is looking at, making sure that that is the best option in determining how to spread those costs out, because of course, if, you can't build things without spending some money, but making those decisions in a smart fashion, that's what this will provide.
Well, I, I, I've been in town for a long time. I was here with the Sydney well closing, and I was here for the Hillview, and I thought that was a fabulous deal. I know we sell our water over to Middleton, which was not our fault, but our forefathers. But I just figured what is good for the whole town. If we go on M W R, doesn't mean that the water in, water out is going to be a taxable thing for those that sign in. Like Tooks Berry medicine hit tremendously when they went on to sewer, and they have a water problem. Most towns do have water problems such as we have. But I just, I, I, I just want the whole town to benefit. You're going to be spending a half a million dollars on this research again. I want the whole town to know that we've already spent probably a million dollars in studying. And I just figure, if it's feasible for the whole town to have sewer, then I'm for it. But if it, if it isn't feasible for us to have it, then I'm against it. And I just hope people realize that it's the whole town. Thank you.
Mr. Priscilla.
I think before you, you say you're against this or you're for it, I think you have to step back and look at the big picture. And for us, the reason that it's up there is a big picture perspective. We have to make investments in our infrastructure in this town because we have neglected them. Today, a hundred percent of the town gets its water from wells. We do a radio pump it right out of the ground, and to, 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 to pay for that water now is very expensive. If we don't do something about our water soon, within the next five years, you're going to soon see up here, an expansion for over six million dollars asking to help repair our wells and to keep them going. It's getting harder and harder, and more and more expensive, and they have no resource. It's a dying resource. They don't have a lot of people that know how to manage these wells that we have today. We also, they have a seventy percent from Andover right now. Our water rates are some of the highest in the state. There is a significant reduction when you move over to M W R A. If we are going to have some expenses associated with buying, yes, all that's going to get explained. We've got to get through this study, though, to make sure we, it's feasible for the town. We believe it is, but you have to go through these steps. And then the other piece of that is this wastewater. And then again, it's a big picture perspective. Ma'am, you brought it up early, if you don't like the way your taxes are going up, I don't like it either, but if we don't find new resources, new revenues, and wastewater, we don't bring wastewater down Route twenty-eight someday in Conkers Street, it's going to continue to get worse. You're driving down Route twenty-eight today, about eighty-five percent of it's an iron sewer, and we can't do anything about it because we don't have a feasible way to remove the waste. It would be, it would be unrealistic to do the whole town. The plan that we're trying to go forward with here, water, M W R A, wastewater linking through Andover, connecting to the greater sewer Lawrence, um, the greater sewer Lawrence District. Am I saying that right? Grand Lawrence sewer district. We feel, once we get through the study, that's going to be the most affordable, feasible way to bring wastewater down Conkers Street, down Route twenty-eight, and actually even connect up Martin's Pond, which is desperate in need of doing. And then hopefully, there'll be some town buildings and so on that we can connect to. That will be about it. But just making that move along will bring in revenues with the study we conducted a few years ago, at least a million dollars of desperate needed money. So, please, I ask you to vote in favor of this. If this is something in the past that we continue to turn a blind eye to, and keep saying no to, you're, we're going to get in trouble in the town. This is planning, this is called leadership, and this is long-term planning, and I ask you to support us in voting yes in this.
Mr. Scanell.
Michael Jeffrey on Scanell, forty-four borough unit. Um, having served on the previous town committee that looked into this for nine years, um, you asked if it was feasible for us to have sewer now, it's imperative that the town have sewer as soon as possible. Um, the main reason being commercial tax base. We have no commercial tax base to speak of, and I think if you go back to the last town meeting where the presentation was made, and you look at the value, tax value of something like Terra Dev, which actually was allowed to hook into Wilmington's septic sewer system, um, and see all those truck ticos on Conkers Street that could be giving the town that kind of tax revenue. There's seven or eight of them out there that are basically majorly underused, and could be office parks and, and developed real estate, but they can't be developed because there isn't enough capacity on those properties to build a septic system that's acceptable. So, I would urge you to vote yes for this small amount of money that will make the town a lot of money going forward.
Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, can you add any? The issue of sewer is, is in many ways a separate issue. Water is really a, a very important issue for this town. Every time we have any kind of major development that comes forth to play in it, we have to go in the water department and say, you know, how is it going to, do we have enough water pressure today? When we, if they have a problem, will the hybrids flow, will it work? So, why is it an important issue to us? And, and taking it out of the ground is, as has been mentioned before, it's a, it's a resource that in this particular, this particular basin, is one that we've, uh, looked, it's been looked at by the state, saying, you know, we're losing ground in this area. The water from the M W R A is, is reclaimed water. It's what, it's water that's been taken back out of the, the flow system and given back to us, cleaned up and given back to us. It's a, it's a renewable, if you will, resource. So, from the point of that, just from that point alone, it's a valuable asset. It's a way to continue to reclaim the water without hurting the environment that we live in anymore than we already are. So, I would recommend having to go forward with this. Thank you.
Mr. Olley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, you know, I've been around a long time, this, these issues have been picked around forever and a day, longer than I've been around. And I'd like to respectfully, you know, just with my former colleague, Mr. Vino, as far as voting these, these resources down. I'd also like to take a little bit of the deception as far as, you know, not much leadership in the past. Significant changes have been made at the state level in relation to what our options are today as opposed to what they were five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, particularly in relation to the M W R A, particularly in relation to us coming up to, uh, Greater Lawrence facility. All of those options were not necessarily available to us previously. It appears as though they are now, and this would be a significantly wise investment to put our money up here and do these five-month-long, fact, and reviews and studies, so that we would have these options available to us. So, again, I would urge you to strongly support the entire article in relation to the capital projects, but in particular, on the wastewater, uh, and the water projects, the, the, or any connection and design plans, as everyone else has already said. Water is the number one priority right now. And we've all talked about, everyone else that's run for public office here has talked about economic development and the need for, for wastewater. But right now, we need water in this community. So, that's the number one priority. As far as wastewater, you may have an opportunity to, to do something about it. Again, it's not tomorrow, it's down the road, but the order to avail ourselves of those opportunities, you have to spend some money upfront. And I would urge you to make the investment.
Further discussion. Seeing, as this is bonding, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I declare a two-thirds majority. Article seventeen, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to raise appropriately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding this year twenty-fourteen retirement obligations, the town employees associated with specified in Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the board of selectmen wish to make recommendations? Mr. Foley.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Holden.
The finance committee recommends.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Article eighteen, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over Article nineteen as printed in the warrant. The board of selectmen wish to make recommendations, Mr. Foley.
Board of selectmen recommend a pass over.
The finance committee. Does the board of selectmen wish to make recommendations? Mr. Foley.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
Mr. Foley.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion. This is stabilization fund, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Article nineteen, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over Article nineteen as printed in the warrant.
The board of selectmen wish to make recommendations, Mr. Foley.
Board of selectmen recommend a pass over.
The finance committee. Mr. Holden. Finance committee recommends as well. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Article twenty, Mr. Olley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, move to discontinue the Route sixty-two culvert installation project that appropriate the remaining bond proceeds in the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents, which were originally appropriated under Article seven of the October fifth, uh, two thousand and ten town meeting for the purposes of funding flood mitigation projects in the Martin's Pond area as specified in Article twenty, printed in the warrant.
Have the motion, does the board of selectmen wish to make recommendations? Mr. Olley. Board of selectmen recommend. Finance committee. Mr. Keller.
Uh, finance committee would like a, some sort of presentation on what prior to being, whether this is sufficient amount of money for it. There's not, not enough detail across this policy maker.
Mr. Olley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Board of selectmen again unanimously in favor of this particular article, and again, this, uh, these funds are available as a result of a project which we embraced, a little way, it was, uh, over the year of, was two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten, in hopes of, uh, increasing the size of the culvert Route sixty-two over Wilmington. Uh, that has hit a, a logjam, so to speak, and we'll not be able to come to fruition. We've already appropriated the money. What we'd like to do is take the balance of the funds and, uh, put those to use as far as introducing some mitigation programs over the Martin's Pond area. As time is running, I'd like to call upon Janet Cozier from the Martin's Pond Preparation Study Committee to present the details as to some projects we have in there.
If Janet Cozier would like to make a presentation, Janet, do you have a thought? Is it five minutes or less? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Six times since 2001, Martin's Pond neighborhood has flooded to the point where Burrows was impassable. Route 125 emergency access had to be used, and the fire police and DPW emergency response has across the town hundreds of thousands of dollars. There were additional costs to homeowners and local businesses. Since the 1970s, numerous studies have been conducted to identify the cause of flooding in Martin's Pond. Every study, from engineering professionals to the U.S. Corps of Engineers, identified the Route 62 bridge as the most significant contributor to the intensity and duration of flooding in Martin's Pond. In 2009, the town was awarded a FEMA grant to replace the bridge. At the April 2010 meeting, the town unanimously voted to support the 25% match required by the grant. The town, the town's consulting firm, Green International, and representatives from FEMA, Lima, and Martin's Pond Recreation Study Committee Association began working on a plan to replace it immediately. Unfortunately, FEMA then put a restriction on the use of funds that the replacement of the bridge could not increase flooding downstream. Sophisticated modeling was done by Green International to determine if there was a way to beat the swell of the Yipwich River during floods and thereby not increase the hundred-year flood zone downstream. Green International determined that this was an impossible task. For years, volunteers have monitored water levels on a monthly basis using stream gauges located throughout the watershed that you see here from eight to one, the flow. The gauge locations are shown on the map. And for your, just quick reference, number eight is in Route 28 at the end of a line, seven is at Burrows Road, five is at Benvento Culver, which is one, you know, one bottleneck. Four is the Route 62 bridge, two is within Lake Concreet, and number one is Route 28 and the old stop and shut. We also check culverts for blockages. This is a culvert at Benvento, which is very undersized as well. By reading the gauge, we identify changes in water elevations and they signify blockages in areas we cannot see. The change is noted. Volunteers are asked to go down the channel and look for, to investigate. We alert the DPW and respond to whatever restriction might be, whether it's culvert clearing, beaver management, et cetera. Since replacing the bridges now is not possible, we're at town meeting tonight to ask that we allow the North Grand DPW reallocate the funds that you approved in 2010 to work on alternative methods to reduce flooding and minimize its impact. So what can we do? Well, we need to develop an operating maintenance plan to create procedures to minimize the impact during storm seasons. What do you do before a storm? Try to get gear boards out in Wilmington to drain out the wetlands and get them to a point where they can absorb more water. And what do we do when large events are coming? What are the things that we can do? We need to investigate what other FEMA opportunities might be available. There's sections of Lakeside Boulevard that are so low you can't get through and that creates an island. So could that one road be grazed? So then you're not stopping flood, you're reducing the impact of having, after the fire department came down with their high-water vehicle, which was in one of these lodges, and was actually taking people that were stranded to stop each other to get food. So also, we want to protect the culverts from debris. Sometimes you just don't know when the debris is at the culvert. There are a lot of bottlenecks that are out in the middle of nowhere. And installing automatic stream gauges would help provide early warning to DPW professionals in a much more professional way. If you notice, we're at the slide at Benvento, which is back, that this gauge has been redone and refixed 10 times from it being ruined by ice. And you can, you can do a lot more with the, um, force of a specific gauge. And also determine the impact of the sediment building in our channels. And see, you know, is it something that's just happened over time? Our sediment is filling up our channels? And we need to start addressing that. Whether that be clearing the channels, whether it is dredging, is it, is it, um, just clearing out the vegetation that's grown there? So there are a lot of things that can be done to help out flooding, to reduce flooding. Um, the bridge was our biggest hope, and it's now been removed from a possibility. So we really have to not abandon the, you know, the strive to try to reduce flooding in this neighborhood. And these are a lot of differences that are also carrying the impact of this change that are going on. So, um, that's it.
Thank you, dear. Mr. Soder.
Finance Committee cannot support this article. There's no question that there are issues in Martin's Pond with all over that. And there's no question that a remedy needs to be found. This is $195,000, something along those lines. And it seems to the Finance Committee overall that a more specific gain plan needs to be in place. We would welcome this article to come back in the fall. And we would welcome the sponsors of this article to come before the Finance Committee to further explain what they have in mind. So Finance Committee cannot support it.
Uh, one last least sustained window. So if we pass over this, are we leaving the money just hanging there, untouched? Can't do anything with it? And maybe we can come up with something for the people of Martin's Pond? Because they're getting hammered over there, they need some help. So can we, am I making a correct suggestion? Can we pass over this and save the money for the people of Martin's Pond? Or we get an idea what to do?
If, if, if we didn't, if we take no action on this article tonight, or the article fails to pass, then that project is still on the books and these funds are still unexpended from that original Route 62 project.
Is there something that's better than another? I mean, if we say no, and the funds are gonna stay? Or if we say, let's pass it over and just hold on? Which, which one is the better solution?
Both accomplish the same thing. There's a motion on the floor. So either way, we're taking a motion on, we're gonna vote on the motion on the floor, unless there's an alternative.
Mr. Barry Carter.
These monies will not disappear. So if there's a vote not to approve this article, these monies will be available for a similar capital project down the road. So these monies can be used, let's say, to fund a budget, or buy vehicles, or do something that other people might think is appropriate. These monies are reserved for a capital project, and therefore, they have to follow the certain restrictions under the law.
Mr. Olley.
This money was appropriate, or isn't appropriate, as kind of matching the grants for the culvert project. That grant has now gone away. Therefore, must reallocate these funds for a similar purpose. We feel that the Board at this particular time feels that it's important to reallocate these funds right now for flood mitigation at Martin's Pond. We think at this particular point in time, the funds being available now will provide us with some latitude to go ahead and seek other opportunities through FEMA, other alternative mitigation plans, as was suggested for the gauges, which right now volunteer people are doing primarily, have the DPW undertake these things. I anticipate moving forward, and in order to grant this period of credit some relief, these funds aren't happening to do it all, but it's going to give us the seed money now to start making some significant progress and lay down a, having got a plan to help mitigate the flooding. So I would urge people to vote for it tonight. The money is not necessarily gonna go away. We've already borrowed it, but it does need to be reallocated through a town meeting vote for a similar purpose of which would be presented tonight, and tonight it is a similar purpose. So I would urge people to please vote for it, and let us move forward with some mitigation relief. Vote for that to my favor.
Mr. Keller.
I don't think it's any question, there is a huge problem in Martin's Pond area. My, we like this, this is, I don't know whether $199,000 does anything to fix it, whether it is a million-dollar project or it's a $500,000 project. There's no, there's nothing specific about what, what's going to be done with $199,000. $199,000 is a kind of an accident of what was bonded, what's been spent, and what's left over. And this family, the initial bond was some $270,000 of that. And some money was spent, and there's $199,000 left. So we're going to put $199,000 trying to solve a huge problem that we don't, I don't think have any idea what the cost is. I think we should go and figure out what needs to be done to fix the problem, and then come back to town meeting and appropriate the appropriate amount of money to fix it, rather than just saying, well, we've got $200,000, let's see how far that could go. Our problem is, there's no plan.
Mr. Keller.
You're probably gonna use other than I, but this is what I would say. There's $199,000 there now. There isn't, I don't think any of us would want to have our home situated in this area without a solution. Maybe there's not a plan now. To me, it's like a chicken and the egg, what comes first? The funds are there, I'm confident in the DPW staff and the wonderful people dedicated so much time in Martin's Pond to try to come up with a solution. They'll use a portion of those funds to, I'm not quite the appropriate plan. Unfortunately, the grant went away, and also, the ability to enlarge the culvert went away. That was the solution. There needs to be a solution, it's a chicken and the egg. I ask, I urge you to support this article.
Mrs. Brown.
I just wanted to know what impact the new building that is taking place in Andover, that's going to impact Martin's Pond with their access road, and might have rights for people in Martin's Pond. Am I to support it because if they only just do the drainage? That could help, but is there any way that some of the liability of flooding could be alleviated by the building that they're constructing on your roadways?
Is there somebody who wants to address the question? Mrs. Cozier.
The building up at Pine Forest Park is, I guess, is going to be built under stormwater regulations that are in place now. Really, the problem that exacerbated flooding in our area was the previous 50 years of stormwater management, which was, you know, letting water just, just get shed from your own home and any kind of business is on to the roadways and then to the stormwater system. So the incremental change that, that if there wasn't any provided by that one development is so miniscule that I don't think it's, it, it even, it even, it doesn't, it really doesn't totally matter. But what I, what I did want to mention is that there, if I may, that there are some things that have been identified, you know, in the final presentation, and I wanted to try to get it out, I guess I'll have to you guys faster, but, um, we have gear boards in Wilmington that are holding up water, flooding approximately 175 gates of wetlands in order to keep their water wells flooded and, and fit. Charged, that's what they were. We don't know if those gear boards are used in a legal way. We don't know if they have, we don't, we cannot find if they have a dam permit for those. We've been trying to create a handshake deals on the operations of those. That's something that needs to be figured out with lawyers, and ensure it would be an intermixable agreement on when those gear boards should be used, when they, we need to, you know, everyone understands the Weapons Protection Act and how important weapons are. But weapons are extremely important to us. And when they're kept flooded up to September, the end of September, when you're coming into the hurricane season, and then they're not allowed to drain out so that they can then buffer us from the, from the flooding. That's a real problem. Same thing in Andover. So we have to talk to people in Andover about how they're managing their stormwater. And so this is another intermixable agreement that needs to be formed. And lawyers will have to be involved in that. There's investigations that'll have to be involved in that. There could be even a lawsuit that have to be involved in that. There's so many investigations that need to be done. Um, if, if the, people have been sanding the roads for 80 years since this bridge was built. When the bridge was built, it may have been the right size. Now, the streams have been filled with sediment. Once you fill those streams with sediment, it's like an act of God to dredge it up. So what can we do to investigate? Whether, is there a chance that we could bring those, those, uh, those sediments-filled channels back to the way they were when we were back in 1930? This is a picture of, um, Martin's Pond, which is 1930. And if you look at this rock, this, the people are standing on the, on the water lawn. Those ponds, these, these, these properties have not flooded like this forever. So what happened? That the water level went from being down here to being up here. We never see this water level ever again. Never see this now. So what has changed? This is, there's a lot of information that needs to be gathered. And there's a lot of, it's not sexy. It's little things that need to be done, agreements that need to be made, management issues, the, the water, the volunteers going out every week checking out gauges, climbing the Benvento, risking life and limb. It's a, it's a, it's a really difficult task. And, um, what we're asking for is for you to take these funds that were allotted for the grant. The grant is over, the grant is done, it's been turned out to the state. We can, that, that money is allocated as a match for the grant. I don't, I don't feel that money is just hanging around that we can play with. This is money that we're trying to say can be used to look for what mitigation can be done. And we have a lot of our uses. There are a lot of things that can be done. But there's no one silver bullet. Our silver bullet has been taken off.
Mr. Jones.
Right, Jones, 251, 50. I don't think anybody would question that there's a lot of flooding problems in Martin's Pond. So relative to this article, you really have three choices. If you vote yes, $190,000 would be appropriated. Problem is, we don't know if it's enough money to really do what they would like that done, and it would require no more money. Second option is to vote no. If you vote no, it's a financial fight. And a financial article that's defeated the town meeting cannot be brought up for one more year without the permission of the Finance Committee. The third option is to pass over, which still retains $190,000 on shelf, if you will, until fall, when hopefully it will be a more complete plan. So town meeting has those three options. I leave it up to you to decide the best one.
Finance Committee went on the record and said that it entertained in the fall. So that's why I did not bring up, the town clerk and I were having that whole discussion. I did not bring up the issue to cloud things, that yes, the Finance Committee says no. They went on the record tonight and said they were entertained in the fall. So, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anybody that's ever experienced the flooding over there can have an appreciation for what it does to the people that live over there. I was disappointed, as I was planning for the gentleman, disappointed if anybody would, couldn't expand the bridge or improve the drainage job of that system, but it was something you said was not setting a problem downstream. So I can understand why I went that way. However, having said that, there is still some level of care that needs to be taken, and some level of mitigation that can be obtained, like keeping track of what's happening on these different locations, the different drainage locations, as the year goes by. So that when the event does come along, you know that each one of these drainage locations, in the best condition that it can be, can handle that kind of a problem. So, um, I'm not sure that you can get the DPW or any of the other bodies to do that, without some level of funding. And to not do it, and then have an effect that causes extreme damage to the people in this area, probably, probably not exactly right. So I would encourage, I think, to, to, to put... So I would recover, I think, to, to, to put this money to the use that it was originally intended, as to mitigate some of the issues on the overdeveloping pond. In anticipation of the fact that we weren't going to get some relief from the bridges and everything, during some of the processes that we went through, the development process, it was a new, those numbers, it was a new access road with an iconic gate that allowed us access to that, to that, to those houses back there from Brooklyn 25 to an emergency, for an emergency situation. So we did do something, and went with the best we could to provide some kind of access for them. But it would be far better if it was an ultimate decision, an ultimate resolution to stop the problem happening to the first wave. But I fear that's not going to happen very easily. And so in the meantime, maintenance of these existing structures and care to make sure that they're in the best possible condition during an event is probably, is probably very important.
Mr. Wolf.
Alan Wolf, 58 Northridge Drive. Actually, I first became aware of this about two hours ago. And if anybody had much more notice than that, then you have more time to consider it than I do. And I don't think this is really a yes or no vote. I think this is a now, or four months from now vote. If we don't take action on this tonight, I would like to see us look at a clear plan that's presented to us. And that plan may include some funds for investigation, some further funds to be put aside to do some actual work, but at least to have some indication of some clear work to be done, cost of that work. And rather than begin it now, we would have to hold off four months and reconsider it in October. So it's not really a yes or no, it's an hour later vote. Thank you.
Mr. Vino.
Joe Vino. So, Joe Vino, let me watch, straight to question.
Mr. Vino has moved to the question. All those in favor have moved to the question? Both unanimous? All right, the question before us is whether or not to, the motion is on the floor.
Okay.
And it's two thirds, two thirds, it's two out of the opinion. It's two thirds vote, which is required because of the voting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I declare it two thirds. Article 21, Mr. Olari. I declare it two thirds. If you want, we can go.
Moderator, Article 21. I move to pass over Article 21, this person in the water.
Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Olari.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over a particular subject matter to the House of Congress.
Finance committee wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Calley.
Finance committee voted 7-1 to pass over this article. I voted against it. I chaired the capital improvement committee this year. And one of the things that we did, we looked at all of the, a lot of the buildings in town that needed work, didn't rise to the level of a capital item. Capital items buying something for $15,000 or more. There were several areas in town, and Mrs. Earl spoke of one, and wrote me remarks, in the senior center, in the activities room, is, just, needs to have something done to the floor. It's just in a poor condition. I had hoped that we would put money into the capital stabilization fund, which we did. And I applaud that, because I think we're on the right track of building a program to fund capital use in the town and to deal with debt service. But we didn't need to put all of it in there at this town meeting. If we could have put some of that money into Article 21, going on some of the repairs and maintenance items that need to get done and will continue to need to get done. And if we put some money in there, the idea is, as the story already says, to take this up in October, and the idea is to take free cash and put it into this account in October and get on with some of these repairs and maintenance items that we need to deal with. But same token, we could have put money into this article and not put much into the capital, capital stabilization fund. The choice was to do, to do the, put it into the stabilization fund. Disappointed, I think we need to pay attention to repairs and maintenance of town buildings before they become a capital item. We've got limited funds, we need to use them wisely. We need to address the most pressing needs, I think. Working on issues that could, could be dealt with now with funding at this point in time would have been a better use of advice. But the finance committee voted 7-1 to pass over the article.
Further discussion, Mr. Ladd.
Yep, we're on the 16 windows. So do we have the money in free cash to fix the senior summer school? It's all gone? Seals are getting screwed.
Further discussion. Saying not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those unanimous? Article 22, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article 22, Amendment Code of General Bilaw, Chapter 104, Local Fingerprints Submission Required for Licensed Applicants. Move to Amendment Code of Northridge, General Bilaw, Chapter 104, Local Fingerprints Submission Required for Licensed Applicants by Annual Full Licensees. Automatic music devices, auctioneer, class one, two, and three automobile licenses, carnival or public amusement, common vitzel, flammable storage, jukebox, livery, lodens, pool, billiard tables, Sunday entertainment, taxis, transient vendor, hawkers and peddlers, common vitzel all alcohol, common vitzel wine and halls, club all alcohol, fraternal club all alcohol, package store all alcohol, package store wine and halls, seasonal malt beverages, one day wine and malt beverages. Into office, non-substantive changes to the number of the law, the order that evening compliance with the number requirement of the code of Northridge as specified in Article 22 of the law.
We have the motion, Mr. Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Delaney.
Would you like to reference the finance committee? On a 7-1 vote, the finance committee recommends against our discussions. We found that it wasn't clear whether this would apply to many of the affected business employees in direct interaction with the public. Wasn't clear on the impact of police compliance efforts. We thought the scope was a little too broad.
So the motion, Mr. Delaney.
The town meeting adopted this original amendment back in the year of, what it allows our police department to do up until the, this bylaw was adopted a year ago, when they would fingerprint a licensee, those that have it, if they only could do a state-like check. What this bylaw allows them to do is do a nationwide background check on those licensees that are currently covered by this bylaw. The board, in conjunction with the police chief government, is incumbent to have all licensees be required to undergo this particular background check. So that we can ensure that those that are licensed in this community are those that we want to do, conduct business in our town. And it is a work in progress, so maybe a lot of news here. But it may be something we revisit and then in October again, as we fine tune it, as we work our way through. So I urge you to vote in favor of this particular article. And I don't know if Chief Murphy wants to speak. Any more of that, Mr. Moderator?
Chief Murphy, would you like to address the body?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Selectman Delaney said, October of last year, the town meeting adopted a bylaw for civil fingerprinting. Essentially, this bylaw allows a license giver to have all the information necessary to make certain that the person who was issued the license is suitable to have that license. And in looking over the article before you today, several of these articles, these licenses are already included in the, you know, the existing bylaw. One of the recommendations that I did make was that class one, two, and three automobile licenses be included in this, based upon some past history we've had with some of those license holders. I've also asked that carnival and public amusement license holders be included in this as well, based upon my experience in some history with those license holders as well. Many of the alcohol are currently, alcohol licenses are currently actually covered by the bylaw, which is manages all alcohol beverage licenses. And the livery, taxi, transient, vendor, hawk and peddles are already included in that as well. As far as all the other licenses go, I'm not too familiar with, with, who actually issues them or what they obtain.
Mrs. Capizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The writer, Capizzi, 12th lady, right. Chief, I'm just curious, this is the license holders. Does that also include employees, license holder?
Chief Murphy?
It does not.
Mr. Kober.
John Kober, three stolen titles. I, I personally am against this article. Reason why is that there's a social issue that I believe quite strongly, it's a personal thing. And that is that we are making it harder and harder for ex-cons to go legit in New York State in a law that said if you're, if you're an ex-convict, you'll be in prison for any kind of reason, you can't be a barb. But that's one of the few things that criminals are really good at, they don't have to go to prison. And some of these things are things like automatic amusement devices or jukeboxes. Those are exactly the kind of things that, there were a few things left that if someone has a criminal record, they can do. Gradually, we, you can't be any kind of professional. You can't be, there's a fraction of it, so I have gone through so many different professions and ways of earning a living that you are left a bit of a break. Technically speaking, the board of selectmen could find out that someone has a criminal record and the woman are as to whether to allow them to have a license. However, I suspect that for political reasons, people aren't going to be like, well, we now know that this person robbed the bank. Well, we don't want this person to blah, 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 blah. But really, wouldn't we rather give them the opportunity to legitimately earn a livelihood as opposed to kind of say, you can't do anything? And I have, that's, that's why I agree that I'm against this, this, this article. I would say alcohol's already covered, livery and peddles is also said it's also covered. And it's these really contributory ones like jukeboxes and the automatic amusement devices that are really, I don't even, there's Sunday entertainment, I don't even know under the, if you want to do some things on Sundays, but it seems to be getting incredibly tricky. That's one thing. Second point, second point is that it was brought to the attention of the finance committee. But some of these things, the only person who will be required to undergo a check will be the person getting the license. So let's say you're getting the license, but you have five, 10 people working for you. Say you're little minions. They're the people that you're actually going to interact with all of us. They don't need a license. So let's say Comcast employees, right? They all need licenses, they need to have background checks. Uh-uh, just the district office would need a license. So I see this as being kind of, oh, it makes us feel safe. But actually, the people who are have a criminal background, possibly, they're not even going to hear it. They're probably not fancy enough to be the original person who's going to need it. Now, it's pointed out that someone said, well, well, past this not very good law or amended to make it stricter. But the first reason that I said that, I just want people to be given the opportunity to make an honest living for themselves, I oppose it. That's all I have to say.
Phil Martin.
Captain, 24, we have posters. A while ago, we passed this favoritism at this town meeting. We did it for a reason, to protect our kids, to protect them. I think we should let it, leave it up to the police department and White Murphy as to who they've been favoritizing. They decided, they've gone through and they've done their homework. It's their doing the job to protect us. So I think we should give this what he asked us to do.
Further discussion, Chief Murphy.
Just two points, as far as the social literature goes. The intent of this is to give the license issuer the most information so that they can make a decision. This does not exclude anyone from getting a license. It just gives the license issuer the full information, full disclosure on who exactly is applying for the particular license. As far as solicitor, we brought up Comcast, I'm the issuer of that license. And each and every solicitor gets issued a license, not Comcast. If you want to clarify that. Everybody that goes door to door has to get their own license. Whether another agency pays for it or not, that's, that's up to the agency. But each and every person is checked, and that's my statement as a quality.
Mr. Olari.
Just to reinforce, you know, as far as I'm sitting on the board, I would prefer to know a little bit more about the applicant's background at that, you know, whenever soliciting to come and sell things to us in town, or whatever the list is there. That doesn't mean that I would vote against issuing the license. But I certainly would like to have as much information as possible about the applicants. So I understand the concerns, but I don't, I don't think it's necessarily well-founded. I don't think there's going to be a game of gut check being played on the board in relation to issuing services in the license.
Mr. Capizzi.
The writer, Capizzi, 12th lady, right. Again, I am surprised that ECLU attorney isn't here. They have to be logged these days. But again, I'm looking at this and I consort, you know? We are looking at fingerprinting who? Somebody that comes in with honesty, who wants to come to our July 4 festivities at Crystal Park? Who do you fingerprint? You fingerprint the licensee, who could be, who knows? I would like to see, again, we are going to do this, which I'm not a fan of this at all. Of who? Who? What effect? I can't really, this is not good, this is not good.
Chief Murphy.
I just want to clarify how this actually amendment came about. As we started to propagate the war with the policy of the board of selectmen, it was the board of selectmen that has requested that these be included in the amendment before you tonight. When I proposed it back in October of last year, the licenses that are currently in the bylaw, is what I asked it to be in the bylaw. However, I do agree with some of the suggestions of the board, including the class two, three dealers. And the carnival worker, it's not a carnival worker, it is the carnival owner. So you're right, the persons that are working the carnival, it's not going to make a difference. However, just because the carnival, company can be a large company, they could also have a small company and they're transient, and they're all over the country. So it's just giving the board members the information to, to... giving the board members the information to submit the application and go over and determine that one. So that's, I just want to clarify why we're here today, we're not here because I'm coming here after you've moved all licenses to be on this bylaw.
I have a follower, I do have a follower.
Mrs. Capizzi.
I do have a follower, but again, I think this opens us up to, again, if you invite prisoners into, say, our July 4 activities, okay, activities if you will, and you have a vendor coming in, what is the process? That the vendor owner has to submit to this according to town bylaw? And then does that kind of open us up to potential liability, again, by someone like the ECLU that says, no, 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 I'm just putting it out there, that I don't think that town needs to, I don't know, someone put it up yesterday, I think we're...
Mr. Klein, Town Council, would you like to address it? Good question, thank you.
I'm Darren Klein, Koppelman Page, through the moderator. One of the safety guards involved is whatever bylaw amendment policy is, if bylaw is passed by town meeting or tonight amended by town meeting, then the subsequent policy of the department, it has to be approved by the Attorney General as well as the Department of Criminal Information Justice Systems. So if they feel there's something that's too broad or infringing on services and business rights, they'll send it back. So they do have the final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, Mike Kirby, 4th Parson, Delaney. From my perspective, this is one where the intentions are good, but I do think it's an overall, the way it was constructed was overly broad. I'd like someone to articulate from the board's selectmen potentially if there was any license that is not being included in this article that's issued. I think if this was, from my perspective, I believe, just that a park launched every license that is issued was included in this provision without necessarily, from my view, appropriate tailoring to the circumstances where it would actually be appropriate. For example, I couldn't even tell you what Sunday entertainment means, so I'd like someone to tell me if I want to rent the parks or not. I feel for Sunday, softball game on Sunday, am I going to get fingerprinted to do that? Because I'm entertaining somebody on Sunday, it just seems to me very overbroad and well beyond what's a legitimate scope of purpose.
Mr. Delaney to the question.
Mr. Moderator, the board took the approach to be all inclusive, not to discriminate Sunday entertainment, my understanding it's live entertainment on Sunday.
Mr. Kirby?
And if I could, at least from my perspective, that's to some extent my point, which is we're taking, in my view, the easy way out, we're taking it over broad in the interest of being too broad without tailoring legitimate purposes.
Mr. Oliva.
Just in relation to the specific of the Sunday entertainment license, most of the Sunday entertainment licenses are also holders of alcohol beverage licenses, so they would already have covered the other ones, so it might just be an answer that the applicant got at some point. But for the most part, there is some simplicity here when it comes to some of the ones that are listed. I can't think of a Sunday entertainment license that has been issued that did involve alcohol.
Mr. Koppelman.
John Koppelman, three stolen titles. I want to make one other point, and that was, I think this is just another step of us becoming a surveillance society. So just recently, Supreme Court ruled that police have the right to take the DNA if they're rescued, if you haven't been convicted of a crime or anything. I just think this is another gradual step on the slippery slope to say, okay, one license to operate a vending machine, we got a new one. And I just imagine that now with this as the norm, in 10 years' time, there'll be something else. And I also think that people say, well, we just want to know who we're dealing with. But I think that once we know, we're very, we're Americans, I'm a South American citizen despite my accent, we're judgmental, we're very judgmental people, we love to judge, we love to watch these trials, the Julie Carriers trial, huge ratings, we love to judge people. When we find out that, even if someone's been convicted of a nonviolent crime, like a bribe, we'll be like, ooh, do we want that? Or maybe, if someone's got a DUI, I know some people say, no, DUI, they could have killed somebody. And then what if somebody was stupid 20 years ago? We're holding this over them, but I can imagine someone saying, okay, if somebody does something that's stupid when they're eating, they go into a really bad bar, and then they really hurt someone, they put them in the hospital. And then 20 years later, they've grown up, where I can just imagine a lot of people saying, well, I don't want someone who committed a major act of violence. So I'm just, again, I would just say, look, the reality is that, I think, except for just very trivial crimes, I could imagine in the future that effectively it's going to be a bar, I also think that people will no longer apply it, they'll, they know that their history is going to become, you know, publicly acknowledged in every way. So I really would plead with people to be a little bit compassionate and to say, look, part of the reason why criminals were condemned, I can say, I've heard a lecture from a professor at the University of California, Berkeley, he was talking about, you know, why do we have such high cynicism? And he was like, well, part of the reason is because we don't enable criminals to reintegrate into society, and this is just yet another barrier. They're not going to be earning very much money operating an amusement device, and we've already had laws covering alcohol. So, you know, some guy in a car on a Sunday where there's no alcohol, wants to play his guitar, you know, and 25 years ago, he did something really bad, I just don't think that we should ask him for his criminal background, because I think there's a high likelihood that it's very trivial. Political reasons, we're going to turn it over.
Sir?
Chris McCarthy, 23, Freedom Drive. I'm against it also. Last year, we had a summer vote for, I believe it was vendors, you know, door to door. The one that I see before me now has 21 different categories. I'm kind of wondering, next year, are we going to have an additional 100 type of differences that we want to check people? I don't want to be a part of a society where you can't walk down the street without having, you know, a police checkpoint saying, papers please. And I don't think anyone here wants our society to go down there again.
Mr. Nino.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Pino, 11th Rock Street, move to the question.
We have the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Chairs in doubt, if my talus would step forward. Oh, I'm sorry. I stand up here, it's about 100 degrees. When did you ever see me take my cover? So now we have the motion. Motion for force is to the question, all those in favor, move to the question.
Aye.
Pose. Unanimous. Now to the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Chairs in doubt, if my talus would step forward. Mr. Jones is counting, the middle in my left, Mr. McGrath is the front in my right. Mr. McGrath.
Eighteen.
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 Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Forty-one-fourth.
Mr. Jones.
Forty miles, moderator, two-nine.
Motion, pay us, thirty-two, last quarter. Article 23, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article 23, appropriate funds for expenses related to paramedic education costs. Remove transfer from FY 2013 operated by the voter in the House of 7 to June 4, 2012, late in town meeting, fire the public salaries, line 33, to sum up $28,300, salary cost related to paramedic education costs, as specified in Article 23, printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the board's selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, you have a secret record.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Discussion, Mr. Delaney.
These funds are appropriate for the fiscal year, but due to timing and circumstances, will not be able to be expended, but they will be expended the next fiscal year. That's why I asked for the report.
Further discussion.
And I just thought that we had said that the cost was covered for the paramedic training.
Mr. Delaney to the question.
It is, we appropriated this amount with this term fiscal year, but it wasn't used because of timing in terms of the five hundred seating, the paramedic training. So we're looking to have it carried over next fiscal year, so it'll be used for that purpose.
So this would be for past, the 28,000 is for past training?
No, the training has not yet occurred for certain firefighters.
So you'd be coming back again for the three that we're putting on for this training also for next year?
That, Finance Committee.
I thought it was already covered.
Chief Warner, would you like to address that? Your body.
The three firefighters that are going to be hired in three months will all be certified as paramedics. They will already be educated, they will already be certified. This money here is for the three firefighters that we currently employ that are finished with their schooling and now going on to their clinical. It happened to not line up with the fiscal year, so that's why it has to be moved into next fiscal year. The firefighters that will be hired, the ones that were previous, they will come through certified as paramedics.
Thank you, Chief Warner. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Article 24, Mr. Messeri, just so, to make everyone aware before Mr. Messeri gets to the motion, Article 24 through 32 are all revolving funds. Mr. Messeri will be reading one motion that encapsulates Articles 24 through 32. Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reauthorize the following revolving funds as specified in Article 24 through 32, as printed in the warrant. Article 24, conservation and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $100,000. Article 25, ammunition, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $78,000. Article 26, rain barrel, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $1,901. Article 27, recycle, recycling, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $2,000. Article 28, cotton and dollar appears, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $12,000. Article 29, emergency manning, all hazards, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $15,000. Article 30, youth services, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $80,000. Article 31, library activity room, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $15,000. Article 32, board of health, and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2014 at $25,000.
We have the motion, does the board's selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Messeri.
Board's selectmen unanimously recommend.
The Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of the threatening zoning bylaws by adding Article 24, medical marijuana treatment centers as specified in Article 33 of the warrant, authorize non-suspension changes to the numbering of the bylaw, and in order to that meeting compliance, go for the numbering format of the code of the law.
Mr. Pierce.
I just briefly, I know the motion didn't exactly match what's in your, in your book there, that's because what we first have to do is make the, this treatment center part of our zoning bylaw, and then we'll include the moratorium that we're looking for in the follow-up. And Planning Administration, Daniel and I will...
In November 2012, the voters of the Commonwealth approved a law regulating cultivation, distribution, possession, and use of marijuana for medical purposes. In my most communities, government has not had specific zoning bylaws in place regulating facilities at the state side of Maryland. The proposed moratorium within amendment bylaws to temporarily prohibit medical marijuana treatment centers while we can crack the appropriate bylaws in accordance with state law. The temporary moratorium will be in effect from now through the end of October 2014, and this will allow the town sufficient time to consider the regulations that were issued by the Department of Public Health this year, studying the potential impacts of treatment centers, and to make informed decisions about how that's regulated in these facilities. The Department of Public Health issued its final regulations on the 8th of this year, which would not allow us sufficient time to propose a bylaw by this town meeting, given the requirements for advertising and the holding of public hearing, and given the need to thoughtful planning for medical marijuana.
Does the board's selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Oliva.
Mr. Moderator, board's selectmen recommend, we can see that this provides us with the opportunity to take a look at what happens statewide in other towns, see if it gets approved with the Attorney General's office, and again, allow our planning department, planning commission, administration, public safety officials to properly address the situation. And we've been told by town council that this moratorium that's being proposed has already been approved through and the agency will let our actions of other communities and multiple, but if this works...
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the community planning commission, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This gives us an opportunity to look at a number of different things. Primarily, there's just a chance with the public safety and look at... Primarily, this is a chance for the public safety and look at locations that might be considered. But one of the things that will also happen is, is it gives us a chance to look at other communities too, because having a moratorium is a fairly common thing, and a lot of communities are doing it, and some will be ahead of us in getting their laws put together and presented to the attorney general. We'll have a chance to take advantage of the success of some of those, and make sure that the law is tracked, is the best one possible, and it normally doesn't affect intent of the bylaw, but also provides protection for the community.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, this is a zoning change that requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare a two-thirds. Article thirty-four, Mr. Prisco.
I move to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-ten A, which allows any public office to remain closed on any or all Saturdays to the same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday for the purposes of calculating the timeframe of filing matters in that office as specified in Article thirty-four of the warrant.
We have the motion of the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Prisco.
The board of selectmen, it was a three-to-two vote in favor of this article.
The finance committee, Mrs. Silver.
Finance committee recommend.
Further discussion. Mr. Prisco.
The reason for the article is that the county clerk has come forward requesting this, because once you've been open on Saturdays, it's very limited amount of traffic coming in. So to staff up on a Saturday, it doesn't, it has not really warranted much traffic, so that's what the request is. I'm probably not doing it justice, but the statute may want to give a little more information if the votes wanted, but that's the reason.
Town clerk, Barbara Stantz, will address the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Prisco said, you know, there isn't a lot of poor traffic, and this only occurs during a special, when the selectmen call for a special election on a weekend day that it impacts the voter registration deadline, which is twenty days prior. So it occurred last year, of course, for the March special election, and we thought that was an exception to our usual Tuesday elections, and then it occurred again this past year when we had another special election on a Friday, which meant a Saturday voter registration deadline began, at which time we had two people come in on that day. But the main reason for it is because the town meeting is a very quiet place on a weekend, and there isn't a lot of traffic on the street or in the building. It's very desolate. You put a sign outside that says, "We are open, come on down." We don't know who's going to walk in in this climate today, and we are staffed with usually either Mike Elfin might be there alone, or two of our election workers, women, and the doors are open. So it's not as though you are coming into a building where you're closing the doors behind you to do some work. Nobody knows you're there. It's an open invitation. So that's the primary reason. I felt that the amount of people that registered to vote on those two occasions, you know, the voter registration deadline is advertised by my office to say when the deadline occurs. It's not for people who are counting by day down and know when it occurs. They know when it occurs because we make it public. So if we make it public and say, "It's on Friday, and we're open until eight o'clock on a voter registration deadline, they'll come then." Again, Friday isn't ideal either, because, you know, it's less trafficy at that time of night, but it's still better than a Saturday. And that's the main purpose for it, is its safety. Thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was, for the minority of this recommendation, a three-to-two vote. To me, most people work around your Friday schedule. While it took until eight o'clock in the evening, some evenings of the special registration, it's somewhat convenient, but I still think that there's times during, particularly the winter months, when the town hall facility is being used on Saturdays, that it may encourage some people to commit and register to vote, and frequency the register to vote. People who drive in by, going to a real world field, or just driving by, or someone get us one away. We should be encouraging as many people to register to vote as possible, making it accessible to possible. So I don't think that it's necessary to exclude the normal registration deadlines. It makes, just to, looking to make as easy as possible as a medical, possible worker in the week, and a veteran on Saturdays.
Further discussion. Mr. Prisco.
The staff, if you want to confirm, it's a twenty-day period they have to register, if I correct.
Yes.
So it's not just one day, and it's twenty days that they have an opportunity. So to, to open up town hall for one day, when there's, you know, twenty days to pull this off, I think it's not really, I don't think it's worth making the effort and the expense and also put our staff in possibly an uncomfortable situation with safety standards.
Mrs. Stantz.
And if, may I further point, I mean, we're open every day for voter registration. It's just that deadline falls twenty days ahead of any event. So registration is ongoing, the bulk of our registrations are handled through the registry of motor vehicles, and mail-in, it's not even wireless. We only, I'd say the exception to that is before a presidential election, which is well advertised on media, and the deadline, you know, will fall on Wednesday night. But other than that, most of the registrations are not handled on a, on a personal basis in our office anymore, since the laws have changed over the years. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-five, Mr. Prisco.
I move to accept provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one-thirty-eight, Section thirty-three P, authorizing the board of selectmen to allow on-premises liquor license to serve alcohol on Sunday in certain legal holidays between ten a.m. and twelve noon, as specified in Article thirty-five of the warrant.
We have the motion, as the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Prisco.
Board of selectmen recommend.
Mr. Pollard, for the finance committee.
Finance committee recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article thirty-six. Mr. Prisco.
I move to accept provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty, as specified in Article thirty-six of the warrant, and to transfer the balance of the other post employment benefits stabilization fund in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand quarters, seventy-five dollars, to the other post employment benefits trust fund.
We have the motion, as the board of selectmen wish to make recommendation. Mr. Prisco.
Board of selectmen recommend.
The finance committee, Mr. Callender.
The finance committee unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thirty-seven, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of four million, six-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents as a premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds and notes issued for the high middle school construction project, which are the subject of a proposition two-and-a-half-dead exclusion to pay for the cost of the project being financed for such bonds and notes, and to reduce the amount of all the rights we borrow for such project, but not yet issued by the town, but the same amount as specified in Article thirty-seven of the warrant.
We have the motion, as the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Messeri.
The board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
The finance committee, Mrs. Hobart.
Finance committee unanimously recommend.
Further discussion, Mr. Messeri.
Just a brief explanation. When we went out, initial bonding was for fifty million dollars. As a result of that, we received a bond premium of the four million, six ninety-two, and that just sits in limbo, waiting for the town to approve the use of that money as part of the bonding for the school. So in other words, this bonding, we went out, we get about a three-and-a-half percent interest rate, and this four million, six ninety-two, we're paying the same amount. So we won't have to borrow that additional money in the future, where we may be paying even a higher interest rate.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article thirty-eight, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to rescind the vote of Article twenty-one of the June seventh, two thousand and ten town meeting as specified in Article thirty-eight of the warrant.
We have the motion, as the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Messeri.
The board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
The finance committee, Mrs. Silver.
The finance committee unanimously recommend.
Further discussion, Mr. Messeri.
Brief explanation. Back in two thousand and ten, the town approved a one-million-dollar expenditure for schematic design of the high school and middle school. And now that the project has been approved, that cost is in the project expense, and therefore we don't need to bond this million dollars. Up to now, we've been paying for it on temporary bonding and just paying the interest.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article thirty-nine, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article thirty-nine, printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, as the board of selectmen wish to make recommendation. Mr. Messeri.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
Finance committee wish to make a recommendation. Mrs. Silver.
Finance committee recommends passing over, but we hope that this article will be reviewed in a future day.
Further discussion, Mr. Messeri.
The reason why we're passing over this after studying it a little further and realizing it has some implications for contract negotiations, and the board wanted to have some time to refer the study, and we do plan on bringing it forth, probably at our October town meeting.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article forty. Article forty is a citizens petition. One of the petitioners, Kristin McGinnis, is here to present the motion. If you want, come down to the front, if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm Kristin McGinnis, by Summit Road. I need that the town will be the sum of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund to install the water main and a fire hydrant on Summit Road as specified in Article forty, as printed in the warrant. The first reason for the fire hydrant, obviously, is safety. There isn't one on the street, or even on the top of the street. For the water main, we have health concerns for our shallow level. Our radon exceeds the advisory limits, over half a thousand in Massachusetts. That's my request.
Thank you, Kristin. Board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
Board recommends, no recommendation.
The board recommends what?
Not recommend, no recommendation.
You have no, you have no recommendation?
I'm sorry. Boards not recommend this article.
For the finance committee. Fight over.
The finance committee does not recommend this article.
Mr. Delaney. Chief Wardock, would you like to address the warrant?
As I understand it, there's four hundred feet of water line that may be put down Summit Road. And if that's the case, the fire hydrant, the fire hydrant that's listed in your warrant article looks to be in the middle of Summit Road. Fire department recommend that you put that hydrant on Central Street at the beginning of Summit Road, so it can be used for the entire street. If the water line is put in, the fire department would recommend that the hydrant be installed.
Further discussion, Mr. Pollard.
So there was a discussion about the fact that normally you'd like to have hydrants five hundred feet within, within distance of another hydrant. Upon some further investigation, found out that this hall is about six hundred feet from the closest hydrant. One of the recommendations was, the chief made when we discussed, was maybe put the hydrant on Central at a much reduced rate cost, probably about four thousand dollars. So again, board of selectmen vote not to approve, and then we'll discuss possibly putting a hydrant on Central Street, which would service all of Summit, and then even portions of Central also.
Further discussion. Do you wish to? Mr. Lassiter.
Yeah, let's spend the four thousand on the fire hydrant on Central Street and take the other twenty-six thousand and get a new floor of the senior site.
Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The major concern with this articles that the board had was that this is an unacceptable street, we have many of them throughout the community that are in similar situations. This particular citizens petition, again, just highlighted a problem that we have that probably needs to be addressed on a more town-wide basis rather than an individual piecemeal basis. We believe that if this citizens petition happens to be successful, we'll be inundated with all sorts of requests going forward. Extraordinary cost, we're talking excess of thirty thousand dollars, or bring the water main down, as well as providing hydrants. A part of the issue here is also the water main to this particular house, because it's on Malwater. Again, we have many situations in North Hurley, unacceptable streets the same way. We've had three years, people in the Swan Pond area asking for water, water mains and water hydrants up in the Swan Pond area. We have other streets off of Central Street, same situation. Other streets hop off of Popeville Road Extension, same situation, Maple Street. Oakdale Road Extension, there's numerous areas of town. So we didn't want to take a piecemeal approach on this. I'm always sympathetic to the request. We also want to point out that again, when people purchase the home, they have well water. Situation wasn't what it was when they purchased it. So we'd like to take a more systematic approach in taking a look at all areas of the community which may need some hydrants, in particular, sewage and water services, but hydrants first from a public safety standpoint, and then see what it would cost to expand water to those areas of town that are not serviced at this particular point in time. But to expand thirty-three thousand dollars on a particular household on one street at this time, we didn't think it was a good approach. And therefore, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend against this particular citizen's petition.
Further discussion. Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article forty to only install a fire hydrant at the intersection of Central Street and Summit Road for total four thousand dollars funds taken from the water stabilization fund.
You mean the water infrastructure stabilization fund?
Yes.
Okay. Would you, sorry. Okay, we have an amendment to the motion to install a fire hydrant in the section of Central and Summit Road for four thousand dollars with the funding source of the water infrastructure stabilization fund. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation on the amendment?
Board of Selectmen support this article, this amendment on a pretty two vote.
Thank you, Mr. Misery. Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation on the amendment?
The Finance Committee's vote is split four, favor four, against.
It was, the Finance Committee voted four in support and four opposed. Okay, further discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the reason why I'm proposing this amendment is we believe now that originally we thought that the fire hydrant was within five hundred feet of the home. And apparently, it's over that. And I think, you know, we have ten, these people are taxpayers. They pay their water bill, they don't have a lot, I'm sorry. They pay the taxes. And this is a safety issue. It's, as Mr. O'Leary explained, the concern the board has had is opening the door to all these other non-approved streets where there may not be water. So I'm not proposing to put water there. What I'm proposing to do is to put an additional hydrant on Central Street where there is a water main. And the estimated cost from the DPW is four thousand dollars. And I would recommend that this amendment be passed.
Further discussion. Mrs. Capozzo.
Yes, we'll consider twelve point five to give Chief Warlock his opinion on this.
Chief Warlock, would you like to address the body?
The hydrant at the end of the road at Summit would cut down the distance that we would need to drop a hose line from Caroline Road, okay? It's more than six hundred feet. We'd have to put two pumps in to adequately supply water for a fire there. But it's also important that we have other areas of town that's the same way. So as I said, if they were going to put a water line down, then they should put a hydrant at the end of Summit Road.
Further discussion, Mr. Peroleer.
The motion to amend, Mr. Chairman, I voted no on the motion to amend. Support the motion to amend this particular time. Again, I would like to take a closer look at all the areas in town where we could do a similar situation, where we could place a hydrant at the end of Summit, maybe at the end of Maple Street, a few other areas in town. And it just undertake some sort of a comprehensive project of installing more hydrants where water mains already exist, which would enhance the public safety of our community. So it would be my intention in this motion, from a presidential standpoint, it would be my intention that if this motion is voted down, I would then make a motion to postpone further consideration. Further consideration is indefinitely to back in October, a more comprehensive plan.
Further, sir.
John Rogers, thirty-nine, powerful vote to, so to Mr. O'Leary's point, is there some sort of vote that's needed to get us that information? Because I understand in this point was a more comprehensive basis. But do you need something more in, would that happen in October or is that what we're working on right now?
Mr. O'Leary to the question.
The Board of Selectmen, I believe, would have taken, we've already talked about taking a more comprehensive look at the entire community, so what we would need to do. So the board, from an administrative standpoint, would instruct the administration to pinpoint the areas that we could, could address and come back in October. So we don't need a vote of this party, if you don't mind.
Further discussion, Mr. Frisco.
I know everybody wants to get ideas up, I just want to be real quick on this. When we walked in this evening, the information, the information had a hand. The fire hydrant was within that five hundred feet. And then between the time of the stylist meeting until this current moment, it changed. So that to me proves that we haven't put enough study into this. I don't want to rush into too many four thousand dollars. When we did a quick analysis here in the last few hours, it come up at a different distance. If this is about safety, we should invest the time. I would recommend you do not approve this up. We have the opportunity to go back, and then we can come back in October town meeting and address it. I think there's enough fire hydrants, close enough right now that in the talk of it, there isn't an issue that can get to those fire hydrants.
Mr. Crook.
Just for some information, there is a venom map at the town in North River. Caroline Road was the only street in the town that had a venom map, which means the tax pay is paid over twenty-eight percent for that water main.
Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll go to the amendment first. And the amendment is to install a fire hydrant at the end of Central and Summit Road for four thousand dollars from the water infrastructure stabilization fund. Right now, we're voting only on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
If my tellers could step forward. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This is on the amendment, not the main motion. This is four thousand for a hydrant at the Central and Summit. Mr. Moderator. Mr. McGrath.
Fifteen, twenty.
Mr. Jones.
Fourteen, one-four.
All those opposed? Mr. McGrath, fourteen, one-four. Mr. Jones.
Fourteen, one-four, Mr. Moderator.
So the amendment carries thirty-two yes, twenty-eight no. So now we're voting on the main motion as amended. All those in favor?
It lasts two-thirds.
Oh, it does. You're right. Motion failed on the amendment.
No, amendments are amended.
On the amendment, no, funding source is infrastructure. No, it's a fail. Well, they're both applying to stabilization, so. On the main, this probably is totally up right now. On the main motion as amended. Yeah, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to postpone further consideration of Article forty indefinitely.
The main motion is on the floor now. The main motion has amended, but it is the main motion as amended on the floor, which means the motion to indefinitely postpone takes precedence over the main motion. So if we vote Mr. O'Leary's motion, the next motion will be to adjourn. So Mr. O'Leary's motion makes, takes precedence. Is everybody, everybody clear on that? So this, all those in favor? Discussion, further discussion, Mr. O'Leary, would you mark our comment I said?
This particular, the main motion, as was presented, requires a two-thirds vote. The amendment didn't get two-thirds vote. If it is defeated, it can't come back for a year unless it gets favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. So therefore, I'm suggesting that we postpone this indefinitely. I gotta show you, the majority of the Board of Selectmen here is in favor of looking at a more comprehensive view, including this one fire hydrant at the end of Summit Road for the October town meeting. So if you pass this motion to indefinitely postpone, and you'll need to just allow us some other suggestions at the October town meeting.
Further discussion. Mr. Copeland.
Jonathan Copeland, please tell the facts. I think that it's a wise idea not to, because we don't know enough about this to potentially, I think it's always a need to support Mr. O'Leary's motion. However, I am, I don't know much about this situation, but the lady mentioned that there's a radon in her drinking water, so that's, that's a really big deal. I don't know whether that was the radon or not. I would be very concerned about that. I'm sure you know it's a causation. I think that in the same way as we gave consideration to the Martins Pond area that is flooding, people have radon in their water, in their well water. They actually may be in reserve presence. People, I presume, are not going to die, even though it's a really inconvenient with the Martins Pond area, but radon is more serious. So I would hope that at some point in the future, we will consider that. Also, I'm willing to bet, I'll be sure, that this motion, if they have this couple that not come and put it before town meeting, and they just called the water department, and they said, hey, would you please put something here, blah, 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 how much attention do they have? So it's kind of like, you kind of have to push it all the way, and as people say, oh, we need time to think, but if it would have just gone nicely in my opinion, it probably wouldn't have been given the same time of day. So I'm very sympathetic to the motion. And I would be sympathetic to an analysis of everybody who has dangerous levels of radon in their water and prioritizes, I think, beyond Martins Pond area. I think if you have danger of getting cancer, especially with children, that should be number one priority.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation on the motion to indefinitely postpone?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend postpone.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation to indefinitely postpone? Mrs. Hobart.
The Finance Committee unanimously votes to postpone this article for October.
Further discussion. On the motion to indefinitely postpone, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.